So, uh, we'll call the meeting order. We have a quorum. Uh, no one has asked to speak for a public forum. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Call sucker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Superintendent report under the stage.
I just have three things to report. We received a $30,000 anonymous donation to the, um, Harlan Education Foundation to be earmarked for a softball bullpen. So $30,000 for them. So that'll go through the foundation. We also got a $10,000 grant from Monogram Loves Kids for the playground. So we just received that. And then I just wanted to show you guys too, something that's new this year is the high school. I don't know, maybe I'm gonna show ya. The high school counselors are sending out a career and a college spotlight to... And maybe you guys can talk to it a little bit too if you want. Um...
Yeah, they don't.
I switched, sorry. I switched windows.
We have not learned to stop letting you do that.
I know, Dave. I know. I don't know. Last screen. Here we go.
Word counselor.
Counselor. Got it.
I love these as well.
So it's in the best relationship.
Yes. I'm not too. I cannot read them.
We'd still be working on these there.
Starting today?
No, starting today for 30 days.
Oh wow.
Except for...
What time is it leaving now?
Well, no, I started today.
All... Roger.
Got it.
I'm on it.
I did make sure. Sorry. Well, I'll just, I'll just tell you. So basically, it's an email that gets sent to all, like, all students at the high school. So they do a career spotlight. So today's was an electrician. And then it just gives you quick facts of salary, education, what the outlook is, what kind of skills you need, personality styles, and then, um, recommended courses for high school. And then they also spotlight, um, a college. So this, today it was DMAC. So, um, and it just gives you some specific things. And if you wanna learn more, it gives you links. And I just think it's, um, it's just really good because I know when I was even in school, you didn't... I only knew what my parents did or my grandparents did, and I didn't know about a lot of other things. So they're trying to shoot things up. So did you guys see that today?
I think that's awesome.
Yeah. So they're doing that once a week? I think, yep, once a week. Yeah.
Awesome.
Okay, that's all I have, Roger.
Uh, facility committee update? Everything going well in the...
Yeah, we're just...
New buildings?
Yeah, I walked over there. Um, the... The middle school is ready for the door frames. I think they're coming. They're ready for glass. It, I would guess they're gonna start doing some finishing work here in about a week or so. High school, we're just really touch, finishing up the...
Bathrooms are ahead of time? Mm-hmm. Ahead of time bathrooms by the gym. So that's good. The one good positive thing about having everyone having to go to the bathroom a long ways away is people from other places are seeing all of our cool new classrooms. I've had lots of people say, "We had to walk like a country mile, but I got to see this, this." So that was nice. Yeah.
Uh, student accolades.
Good. Uh, Mr. Mosher is not here. Oh, this is gonna do the same thing. Okay, so...
We've got one.
That top right is a picture of some backpacks and some different school supplies that were donated to the, to the primary. And then preschoolers were out watching as the crowd was getting ready for the new playground. So that's kind of a really cool picture. I think we're excited about that. And then the walking school bus.
Oh, there's Leo.
Um, yeah. There's a couple there with the walking school bus, which was really nice. And then that last one on the right is Mr. Mosher. And that's, uh, I think that might've been one of their very first assemblies that they did out here in the park. And they're seeing the pledge of allegiance there. So that's kind of a fun thing that he's been doing with the intermediate. And... Mr. Mueller is out here, but this is from the Family Consumer Science. And this is part of a grant, and they got new equipment for Family Consumer Science in their cooking classes. So I think they're excited about that. And then down below, you've got, they're doing media days at the middle school as well as the high school. So they really ramped that up. And Mrs. Wiedemann has really ramped that up in those classes. So we've got a cross-country, some basketball and, or some football, gee, she's football and some, right, eighth grade football and seventh grade football. And...
And the high school, it's pretty busy in the high school. The top right picture there is a, our, we have, the HCHS news is back. I think it was gone for about five years, and now it's back. And, um, it's just been really fun. If you follow, uh, on all of our socials, I think it's on everywhere. But I access it through Facebook. And, uh, so that's a picture of Ms. Weiss being, um, interviewed about empathy. That's our character trait of the month through CKH. And what is empathy and things like that. So it's been really good. I think their assignments are, they have to do some actual news stories once a week. And then they have to also do some fun, like, kind of TikTok trends or just different fun videos too. So those have been really, really good and fun to have. Um, this is a picture I took at the Underwood, our first football game. It was a whiteout. And our student section this year has been awesome. Like, they, those kids are so into it and just cheering and working with the cheerleaders and just... They've been phenomenal and really fun to see, especially our seniors getting really into it. And, uh, yeah, so that's great. Um, the picture on the left is, that's our tennis team. Um, girls placing in one of the tournaments. I'm not sure which tournament that is, but some, some good shots there. The middle one is, of course, they posed for a picture, but I was trying to capture them. Uh, we had our first pep rally, and Ari and Emerson were greeting students at the door, like what we do for CKH. They had, the student council had kids at the, at the door to the pep rally and giving fist bumps and handshakes and high fives to every student as they walked in. So I just thought, what a great empowerment that now, so our students are starting to do that. Um, the bottom right picture is our childcare, uh, program. And we have four students who are working at daycares. At daycare, and before they could do that, they had to do CPR certification. So this is, I think that's Nancy on the right, um, teaching the CPR certification class. And so they have that done, and now they are working paid through our childcare grant, paying internships at daycare, and then also taking, uh, classes with Mrs. Shaven on childcare stuff. So just a lot of new things at the high school that have been a really, a really positive start to the year.
And then I, do you wanna talk about the Cyclone Corner, Chief Casey?
Sure. And then that top right is one of our classes for Cyclone Corner. And that is kind of the business storefront, um, that is going to be coffee and ice cream smoothies. And they're just getting the actual shop done. It's really close. I think it's down to paint, and they just need to get it stocked up. The coffee guy is coming to train Wednesday morning, and I think the ice cream guy is coming Wednesday afternoon to train the teachers, and then they'll train the kids. And then they're, they, we have two entrepreneur classes right now that will work through this. And they're working on getting all of the marketing and everything started up. So I think the kids are all really excited for when we actually are, when are we actually going to start selling coffee? Because they're just excited to have that there and try it and be part of it. So...
Will they be certified baristas then?
They'll be baristas. They're doing like a Cafe 101 class. They're, they're taking a Cafe 101 class with a, a, a business who, I think it's the business who we're buying the coffee from. And so they, they're taking their kids, the kids up there, I think, to do Cafe 101. And then they're gonna transfer that over to, like, future years, we can provide our own training. So we really are taking a barista class. Yeah.
And then that last picture is the ribbon cutting, where we have little Lincoln helping with the giant scissors for passing his gifts. So that was a good thing. Mia, that night, we did a lot that day. So then we also have the scoreboards for Mia, and we've gotten lots of compliments on that as well. Class of 2028 raised $150,000 for two of those. So that's amazing. Um, that second picture is just capturing kids' hearts, the training that some of the secondary teachers were at. And then that last picture is all of the teachers that got the teacher grants from the foundation and the district, which is, this was the first year we did that. So...
Move on to personal report.
Catherine, the kids were coming home today. So, um, I don't know if there's anything specific in there. There's resignations. There's quite a few coaching hires. And so the only vacancies now, assistant girls' basketball, middle school track, and then, um, some para openings and so on.
Can I vote, uh, motion to approve the personal report?
So, excited.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We will move on to approval of the Veterans Memorial Auditorium Use Agreement.
Skip, you skipped.
Please skip the special education.
No, I better not skip it. All right, approval of the special education deficit in the amount of $206,409.31.
This is manual thing. Um, what we do is we, uh, we obviously have, we have special education fund money, so we're allowed to get the authority back there, which we have every year. Comparison to last year, actually, we felt pretty good. We, um, we, it was pretty level with last year. It was, I think it was 204,000 or 3,000. Last year it was 260,000. And we had a couple of, kind of costly things happen. We still kept it down. So we've been proactive and funding it however we can. Felt pretty good, uh, we ended up.
I'd raise my compliments to the administration. I think they do a great job at navigating this, this area. It's, it's, I know it's very complicated.
And unknown a lot of times too.
Unknown expense.
Unknown expense. And, you know, in fact, we ended up at 203, but a couple of expensive things happened. So, we're good.
Anyone have any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the special education deficit in the amount of $206,409.31?
Go move.
No second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now we'll do approval of the Veterans Memorial Auditorium agreement.
We're moving too fast, just in case you... It's 5:14.
Roger, just slow us down.
The vets auditorium, this is just really updating it. I think what we've alw, they've always gotten there as far as the, um, the, I wanna say the person that has to show up there and, and be present, they've always tailored it, kind of matched it, I believe, is correct. I think that's what Anthony said. So it's all we're doing here there. We really didn't change anything other than a big amount of dollars.
Do we ever actually use it for practicing for anything inside?
We used to use it for some basketball practices, and we kind of...
Wrestled.
Occasionally, but it's very rare.
Do you use it for, you mean wrestling?
I don't think we've seen it.
With the girls wrestling?
Yeah. Um, I think...
I'm not, I'm, I'm...
Well, we were saying, I didn't even think the basketball groups are up, is it even possible?
They, they used it for, like, uh, middle school. You guys had practice there at preseason practice for a few weeks leading up to the actual start of middle school basketball. For the girls, because they didn't start, they don't start until January, so they started middle school basketball, like, beginning of December, a few nights a week, I suppose.
But we're okay if we use it.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's very influential. It's just occasional.
This just gives us...
It's nice to have a backup.
The opportunity to have it if we would need it.
And really actually fortunate we have that as a backup, so...
I will need to abstain on this vote because I'm on the vets commission.
Can I get a motion to approve the vets auditorium agreement?
So moved.
Call sucker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I assume we're going to the substitute teacher approval, or pay increase approval? Approval of substitute teacher pay increase.
So we did some research and checked around, and, um, our substitute pay was, was lower than most around. And we, we have quite a few long-term subs. We have a lot of paternity leaves right now. And, uh, at this point, even if we get a retired teacher, they can go some, somewhere else and make more money. Uh, if they're, even if they were one of ours. So we are asking that, the substitute authorization means that you don't have a, you don't have a teaching degree, and you just have to have 60 hours of college credit in order to get a substitute authorization. So you take a class, which is, which is great, and we have a lot of paras that do that, so then they can cover when we need to. But we also have others that are sub, so on. The teaching license sub, we just raised from 150 to 177 per day because we felt like we needed to, um, have a distinction between the ones that have an actual teaching license and those that don't. And then the long-term sub is, is $200 per day, starting on day one. Because it used to be, you started out with the 177 through the first 10 days, and then you went... But if we, we know right now a lot of times that it is, it's a long-term sub. Sometimes it's eight, six, eight, 12 weeks. So it's just helpful, because they're doing a lot of planning too on those days. They're not just working during the day. They're also doing exactly what a teacher would be doing. So, um, we feel like...
Basically, having to do this to be competitive in these subs here.
Do we know what the rate is around the district?
We were, we were low.
Every district can set their own, so they were all different. But, um, we were, yeah, we were in the lower, even just with the smaller districts, with the AHST and IK and Manning, we were lower than they were even. So...
Where's this?
Not putting it out for sure.
This puts us, well, especially the long-term puts us ahead of everybody. And we do feel like that, that will affect student learning too. Because if you have really good long-term, I mean, when you have someone that's out for 12 weeks, that's a big, that's a big deal. And we can get commitments from teachers that way. For example, we have one teacher right now that, she's subbing, and she just retired last year. But I think we can get her to sub a couple more times because of this.
Similar to a request the board made last month, I would love to see you guys provide us real data rather than just say we're below.
Yeah, we have it. I'll send it to you.
Yeah, but before we're, before we're asked to act on it, you'd be good to see your data.
Yeah, we have it.
Yeah.
How long's it been at 150?
Three, four, five years.
You know, I, I think that's an excellent idea to, uh, to underscore, is the idea that, you know, the gold standard for, you know, the board is responsible for spending the money. Uh, the administration did a great job. We need to support the administration, I think 100%. But when it comes to the purse, it's the board, and the gold standard really is competitive bids. And so we should be, you know, fiduciaries of the, of the public trust that's seeing bids. That's why I was a little bit set back a few weeks ago by that bid, because it wasn't before the building committee, and it was just a consortium. It makes me think of OPEC. And I think it's just so important for us to make sure there's some competitive bids, that know what the reason is for spending sums of money and, and, uh... Anyway, I like to see, when you come to the board, that the president, vice president vetted these before they come here, and we have the actual numbers rather than, hey, just rubber stamp this. That's, that's not good. That's not what we're here for.
I do think you guys gave us numbers and, uh, well, I guess Roger, that wasn't there.
Yep, I should've put them in Fridays notes. I just, I should've put them in Fridays. I should've put them in Fridays. It's alone. I can get them to you.
Is this something we would... What, what would be the ramifications of taking this until next month?
We can't pay the long-term subs, the $200, until starting.
But is there a reason that can't be shared right now? So we can act on it?
Yeah. Catherine was, is off today and has that, but I could check with you. I mean, I can...
Well, if she's the only one that has it, I understand.
We can call her and see. I mean, I think she has a spreadsheet. I'm gonna go on to, you wanna table this for briefly?
Table this and then come back.
Do we have to be cautious, uh, table until the end of the meeting?
No way. Clearly, we table pay increase discussion until we have official data available.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I didn't print my form out, so I don't know where we're going.
I think it's policy reviews next.
Policy review.
Policy review first reading?
Yeah.
Okay. This policy review had absolutely no changes?
Right.
So... I had, I had one question or comment, um, related to access to student education records. The policies we have mirror the requirements in FERPA, which I understand. Uh, I personally don't like putting policies in place that we wouldn't, that don't meet expectations for enforcement. So in this case, to me, it's almost laughable. Who would wait 45 days to deliver student education records if they were requested? You know, that's, if we can't deliver that in five days, that'd be shocked. So I don't know that that means we would need to amend this, but if we aren't administratively able to deliver well beyond that 45-day requirement, I would request we'd come back and review that at that time. Zach? Would that be through? More through your end?
Sorry, you gotta repeat us?
So... I did talk to Catherine about it. She said we, the policy just mirrors the FERPA requirement. And Catherine doesn't think we would have issue? No, she... In, in her standard practice, we'd be, we'd be able to respond to those requests fairly quickly. But... So do we want to... What do we want to get? I'm not gonna make a request to them, and that, I just... As our review goes, I, I don't like putting policies in place that leave an opportunity that we wouldn't find appropriate anyway.
45 days to get it.
I remember thinking, I would, I'd be a little irritated if...
If it took 45 days, yeah.
Would there be extenuating circumstances that would cause that? Is that why they put it that way?
In what context would we, or...
It's a, it's a federal standard.
Exam, but I don't know what, would it ever take 45 days to release?
Yeah, I would.
I, I can't think of anything.
I don't think we would.
And I suppose because it's a federal state lawsuit, where we would need to...
Right, we would need to verify things, or if there's a custody case, or if there's something like that, or one should have it locked in. It may take a little, but, but, yeah.
Why is this a little time?
And I see that's why, uh, I...
That's why they give you the 45 days. But I mean, like you said, I would more, I would get it done as soon as possible.
Our operational standard wouldn't come near that ever before. That's why I'm not gonna ask if we amend it. Just, just a comment. And I then get a motion to approve policy review schedule first reading.
So moved. Call sucker.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right, can I get, uh, well, next up is policy review schedule second reading. Any questions, concerns, thoughts on that?
I just mentioned, you know, you probably wondered, I've been voting no on these policies for the last few months. And, uh, I just feel the school district ought to think about some kind of revealing what the policies are. Uh, you know, I think the rule of law is a beautiful thing, uh, but the rule of lawyers is often what it turns into. And unless you're a lawyer, you can't understand these things anyway. I, I'm, I'm all for local policies, and I think, uh, folks in Harlan could do a lot better job of, of enforcing or suggesting policies that's, works here in, in Harlan. You know, things in Davenport don't work the same way as things in, in Denton or Harlan. And I just really believe in local policies. It'd be much better, uh, in the long run. One of the things is, is that these policies are all written by lawyers in Des Moines. Very complicated. And I know the first thing you have to do is run to the phone and ask the lawyers. And I've read thousands of contracts, but these are very difficult to piece together. And they're really blown by political winds. And assume that, right now, we might like them, but the next year, we might hate them. And I think that's unfortunate, that politics drives the way we, uh, the way we work in Harlan. Uh, because I think we could do a better job. And I think, uh, you know, the people that are, that really don't understand it as a kids, because, uh, when you put politics in, in all this stuff, it just doesn't make any sense. And us grownups sometimes know what's going on, but, uh, you know, they're, they're subject to these, and it makes no sense. So that's my two cents on why I've been voting no on these policies.
I gotta ask you a question then. What kind of budget would you want us to, would you want the board to put out there? Because I would think that it would cost a substantial amount of money for us to pay a lawyer locally to write all these policies.
Well, I'll tell you the truth, Roger, I'm not in favor of hiring a lawyer, that's for sure. In fact, I think Iowa would take and rent a big boat and put all the lawyers in Iowa on a boat and send it to China. We'd be a lot better off. Uh, but I would say it would be good if we could just, uh, you know, talk about it and just recognize that, you know, something needs to be done. I don't know, I don't know what the solution is, but I, I raised the question. Uh, you know, I've been here, here for about four years, and they're, they're so hard to read. You know, if you gave me a book, I could have a chance of trying to piece this together. But, uh, you know, I don't, I don't understand how all this comes together. And like I say, I'm not, I'm not trying to tell, to tell you that we should hire somebody to do the job for us, but it's something that we should talk about. You know, you can't improve things if you don't raise questions and discuss them. And that's one of the things for, as far as strategic planning, uh, I think should be raised.
Good question. I appreciate that, Roger.
A lot of them, uh, are statutory as far as law. And I, I know, I heard what you said about, you know, the rule of law, but that's the way it works. And if the legislature says that your policy needs to fit within these parameters, I don't know what happens in a scenario where, what if the board disapproves of a policy that's state law? Could be, uh, it wouldn't work. So I think that, um, I, especially the ones that are clearly statutory, I, I think are, I'd have a hard time coming up with a reason to, to vote against it. But, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I think we're throwing the baby with the bathwater a little bit by saying no to something that is, we have, and that's the rub. We have, we have a choice on it. And that's not really local. We don't feel like it's local control. But I can tell you, our legislators have worked hard to give more local control. And, and it's, it's a, and I've sat on the other, on the state side, what, looking at how these are developed. And it does get kind of legalese sometimes, and it, it's a little bit frustrating. But at the same time, it's, it gives, it gives us protection and gives us a little comfort. So, but basically, the ones that are, you know, within the legal framework, I, I think we need to be saying more.
Yeah, I would be concerned about if we would steer, not, but if we took, really steered away from some of these, I'd be concerned about what kind of liability we could be opening our district up to. Because if there, if the policies aren't properly written, protecting our district, because we decide to do something different locally, we could open ourselves up to...
Sure, and I agree. Everybody's worried about protecting themselves, yet the citizens do have a, a voice. And, and...
Well, in this case, I'd say we're protecting the citizens because...
Right, yeah.
We open up to lawsuits and...
Well, in, in some cases... There's where the baby in the bathwater is.
Yes.
What parts of it, can citizens have a voice and most can't. But I just raised the question that I... But I just raised the question that I should, I believe in our citizens.
Have any questions, concerns about the second reading? Any motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, we move on to consent agenda.
Actually, can I, just a step, Pete? Oh, I did not catch what their motion was on, on the teacher pay increase. I apologize.
Oh, just to table until we have further data.
It's a table.
With the hope that we get further data before the end of the meeting today.
Right.
We're not going to?
She's not in a spot where she can.
Okay, so... My table until next month, is that...
It's tabled, they're currently tabled till we have further data.
Excuse me?
The motion was to table until we have further data, so that'd have to be overturned if we're gonna pick it up.
Yeah.
Consent agenda. Any questions on the consent agenda?
Brian, I didn't find anything.
So what?
I didn't find anything to ask you about, did you?
This was early, yeah.
Any motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
What time is it? Oh, we, okay. I make a motion.
You guys killed me.
Motion due adjourned.
No. I, uh, I do have one thing to bring up. I think we should, as a board, if we're gonna have questions like this, that, I mean, that we want clarification on, I think we should ask them to bring that to the meeting if they don't provide it to us or not. So that we can make action out of it. Cause we all have access to this stuff prior to the meeting. So that we can, they can, so our administration can continue to move forward without waiting till then.
Without waiting. I, I did... I, I would agree, it's a balance. I asked as many questions as I could before the meeting, and this one, I didn't think to ask.
Yeah, I didn't think of, yeah.
Either way, I can't act on it till I have the data.
Yeah, so, um, but I think we should try to, you kind of, you know, try to go ahead and ask them for that data and have them send it to us. Um, if, if that's something that we're wanting to see.
Yeah, agreed.
No.
We'll take it.
Now we're ready. Everyone set?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Yes. Make a motion to adjourn. All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?